I say I'm working out in the south.
You were just asking me to take that. If you're trying to fix it, we have to be, you know, sort of see what's covered. It happens. It's very difficult to do. Probably young people. Yeah, we're good. We're not. We're not crazy. So let's see. We're just, you know, 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 I'm just trying to figure out, see, I think I'm afraid of something. Sometimes you're worried.
Yeah, yeah. 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 Yeah.
Um, here we are. And she, yes, I understand. You're always the town. You're the one.
Yeah. Oh. Yeah. Yeah. Now, we're talking. Why a whole push? You're not coming to yourself. And, 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 uh, oh, yeah. Yeah. But it's actually important for any way of walking. Because I want to know more. Well, it's also, yeah, it's not. Yeah, I don't have any problems, I think. Yeah, well, yeah. 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 Now, with the team, I feel like I made a lot of progress for Jesus. But this morning, I told him, yeah, I was gonna get one more question. That's all right. Yeah. Just see what we're saying. So, Charlie, but I don't know if it's my question or his question. There's probably, yeah. I mean, I think that's too much. What is it? I think we're seeing what, what, fifteen, sixteen? Oh, yeah.
Well, mostly, it's, 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 it's stored in the, yeah, mostly.
Right. Right. We can, we can, we can work, so.
I wasn't allowed to.
Well, I have, I have, like, it's probably, I, well, I have, I have, yeah. So, yeah. 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 Twenty-four hours. Well, it's about, like, you, yeah. And I come up here, my heart here, and, and, well, we're super hungry. Yeah. So, that's our only, that's our only, my heart, I think, yeah. It's funny. Yes. Yeah. It's fine. And that actually, the pressure, it's not a foot, it's a couple of the bed. Yeah. 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 Yeah, right. Yeah. Yeah. I don't think it's anything that's, 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 we put it on the floor. We'll be sky.
It was, yeah. Yeah. I mean, time, I thought, that wall was, I think, but it might be.
Yeah. But I actually was waiting, like, it's not an occasion.
Yeah. We got to stop around here.
Yeah. 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 Yeah.
This complicated, right? We all had it once.
Yeah. But it was, it was, maybe I'll remember it. That was a good one.
Well, a lot of pictures you guys made us.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Some of the other stuff. Please stand for a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, in the principle of liberty and justice overall. Good evening, everybody. Borough of Seabright, compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act has provided a gate for the exchange. It provided adequate notice with the. What is going on here? This is, please, that's the, the, I can do it. Adam, I had to do it up. I, I am able to, the, the, open, has provided the adequate notice of the time, date, and location. Okay. I usually say of the date, time, and location of this meeting to the Esberry Park Press on January twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three filed notice with the Borough Clerk and posted notice on the Borough Ball, Office website. This meeting is open to the public, and I welcome you all. Thanks for coming. We have roll call, please.
Councilor Bieber.
Here.
Ms. Bills.
Here.
Mr. Cashmore.
Here.
Chairman Cunningham.
Here.
Mr. Julia.
Here.
Vice Chairman DeSao.
Here.
Mayor Kelly. Mr. Lawrence.
Here.
Mr. Lexine.
Here.
Mr. Schwartz. Mr. Zelina.
Here.
You. On to the minutes from the April eleventh, the discussion for a motion.
I'll move it in. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilor Bieber.
Yes.
Ms. Bills.
Yes.
Mr. Cashmore.
Yeah.
Chairman Cunningham.
Yes.
Mr. Julia.
Yes.
Vice Chairman DeSao.
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence.
Yes.
Mr. Lexine.
Yeah.
And Mr. Zelina.
Yes.
Resolution for, onto the resolution for the exquisite relief, uh, application.
I'll leave it there.
I'll sit.
We need a roll call, man.
Councilor Bieber.
Yes.
Ms. Bills.
Yes.
Mr. Cashmore.
Yes.
Chairman Cunningham.
Yes.
Mr. Julia.
Yes.
Vice Chairman DeSao.
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence.
Yes.
Mr. Lexine.
Yes.
Mr. Zelina.
Yes.
Okay. Onto, uh, application number two thousand twenty-three oh three. Michael Berkowitz, nine trade one plan. Welcome, Mr. Berkowitz. Let the record show that Mr. Bieber is stepping down. He is on the two hundred foot list. Also before. Excuse me, Captain Bieber, step in there.
And also, before we get started, we, uh, pre-mark the following exhibits of what was submitted. Exhibit A one, the Borough of Seabright planning zone board application, dated thirty-third, two thousand twenty-three. A two, uh, the application for the zone permit dated three fifteen point three, which was a denial. Uh, exhibit A three, photos of the rear of the subject property, uh, dated two six twenty-three. There's two of them. A four, survey by Thomas Craig Finnegan, uh, dated eight five, uh, two thousand twenty, hand-marked by his water pools and Jeffrey S. Wallach, professional engineer. And A five, the architectural plans by Anthony Candor, dated three eight twenty-three, two pages. Uh, and we also have, of course, our board engineer report, Mr. Holder, dated four twenty twenty-three.
Sir? You are the floor.
Okay. Before, before you do that, I might swear we're both parties in this way. You swear the testimony you are giving here tonight to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
Yes.
And if you could, each individual, say your names, tell your last for the round.
Michael Berkowitz.
U R K O W I T Z.
Anthony Candor, C O N D O U R minus.
Mr. Giger has three reported for many times just to save, uh, some struggling differences. Predators. Unless anybody has an, uh, problem with that. We're going to the board.
Okay, so I, uh, thank you for seeing me. I, uh, purchased my home, uh, a couple of years ago, and, um, with the hope and desire to build a pool, I hired, um, an engineer and a, uh, company to, uh, begin that process. They applied for a permit. Um, everything was approved. Moved forward with building a pool. Um, the actual company switched over from, uh, Edgewater to J and J just due to a health issue with, uh, the original person, the original company. It's not really relevant, but that's why there are two different companies that were involved in building it. Um, but it was approved. Everything was approved. Everything was according to what I was told I needed to do. And, uh, you know, spent a good amount of money and time in having, uh, Edgewater go and build a pool, which now exists in my, um, in my yard, or it was my back area. Um, and, uh, hired, uh, Tony Candor's and, um, another company to work on, uh, the architecture around it. And when another permit was submitted, it came back to us that, um, well, actually, it was mistaken, should not have been approved for building that pool. The pool already exists, it already paid for it earlier. So I don't know exactly how it went down, but obviously getting that information, not when we slow down the process, but I now have a pool without the ability to move forward and do anything else because I guess there was some kind of, um, discrepancy where something was approved and then I guess mistakenly shouldn't have been, or whatever. So I'll turn it over to Tony. And see, that's as much as I know, and this is Tony's expertise. I, I work in the entertainment business, so I'm just kinda sorting it out from what I've heard, but I'll defer to the top.
Right. I was only trying to tell, if, if he didn't realize what happened, whoever was, whoever reviewed it back then and wasn't married, um, put it into the wrong zone where seventy percent lock coverage is allowed, and so it went through. And then when it got into Mary's hands, she looked at it and said, oh, wait a minute, now this is in the R one zone. You're only allowed fifty percent, so even the pool shouldn't have been approved. So, so we're here today to look at variance for lock coverage. Uh, we're asking for fifty percent where fifty, excuse, we're asking for fifty-seven percent where fifty percent is allowed. So.
And the pool brings it to fifty-seven?
No, well, the pool and the hardscape, and, see, I.
So the hardscape.
Everything, yeah, everything. Yeah, everything, uh, right up. All the impervious lock coverage is what's bringing it to the fifty-seven, including the pool. Um, I will point out, I'm sure you're all aware of this, that there is the seawall that went right through, the seawall eating it goes right through the property. And we do have to count that into the incur, so that's, that's, uh, twenty-three hundred and fifty square feet, so.
Is the pool, is it in the suburbs?
The water actually is, yeah, it is considered impervious, yeah.
It's just absorbed by any water.
Yeah, apparently, uh, in, uh, Seabright. Yeah, sometimes it doesn't, but in Seabright, it counts as, uh.
Well, what was the, the proposed, uh, surface around the?
The first time around? Oh, originally, it was actually going to be concrete or something.
Wood.
Or, but now it's wood. Now, the proposed now is wood, which actually drains, so it is, uh, it is a better situation with the wood rather.
So a low deck, is that?
Yeah, it's a low, it's a low deck around the pool, correct.
Not a patio, it's a low wood deck, that would drain and be tall.
Why don't you explain everything else that's around the pool, so we don't.
Sure.
I have so many questions.
So.
And.
So the original application, which I put it, I was only looking at.
Did I do your closing?
Yeah. I can step down. It just, it just occurred to me, I think it's closing. And, uh, just as we were talking, so I, I had a bunch of caution, I'm gonna step down from the, yeah.
Understood. Look at that show.
Sorry, no, I didn't, I didn't, I'm sitting here, I'm like, hey, can you just, yeah, yeah.
Mr. Lexine is stepping down due to a previous business arrangement with the.
Me too. Uh, so if you look at the site plan, you'll see, uh, the existing pool, which is existing, it's in, uh, thirty-six by eighteen. And then, uh, around that is a deck, which is going to be out of wood, and it will have spaces in between the planks, so it will be able to bring. Um, and then other than that, there's, there's not much. There's some stepping stones going along the side of the property here. There's a little deck here for barbecue, and then over here, there's some pads for, uh, pool equipment and utilities. So the main part of the impervious is the, the pool and the pool deck. And of course, the seawall is creating quite a difference. Other than that, the footprint of the house isn't changing other than that.
Also, there's steps over there, the seawall, or they exist or not?
They don't exist now, but, uh, from what I understand, there has to be a separate application. We, we, it, it, well, it's a Mary's.
Well, you need a building permit.
A building permit? Yeah, right, correct.
I'm happy to follow, let us throw calls necessary for that as well. In this particular case, I just, um, just hopeful for a variance to the, um, situation.
Yeah. I guess what, as far as the, the seawall stairs go, that would be a separate zoning review, I guess, that's what that would be.
I don't think so.
When, when the building, when the building permits are applied.
We don't review many, huh? We have to do something.
I think it's, um, for us.
Oh, you know, no, no, there's only officer would just have to check.
She, they just make sure complies with.
Exactly. Right, so it's not your, you don't, it's not your.
There's ordinances about how to do it.
Correct. Yeah.
I was just looking at the engineer's report at paragraph, uh, three, it talks about the fence, I'm sorry, to do with, describe the pool surround fence.
Uh, yeah, we're proposing a pool fence around, you can see it here around, around this area. It, it'll be a code compliant fence, so it has to be at least be four feet tall. Um, there's a gate here, and it goes around, and then another gate in the back that eventually will lead to the, the seawall access. So if you can see where I'm pointing here, it comes around.
Do, do we know what type of fence?
Yes, I don't actually. What type of pool?
Yeah, I didn't decide exactly, yeah, but we're supposed to meet with, um, our deck architect, um, this week.
Do you know if it would be solid or?
It'll be whatever I'm told means.
Okay. I would think you would.
Yeah, I mean, you know, obviously, there's more decorative types, I mean, chain link fences don't exactly look nice.
Yeah.
We're having, going.
Well, he has a chain link fence nationally next to him, because it's the house next to the public access.
Yeah. So, or that's another reason why you're in order to check, or something that provides a little more privacy, but, um, you know, we put a lot of care into, um, operating everything internally and externally in that, that particular property.
Would you please explain where the landscaping will be? Very interested in trees. I think we'll choose plants around.
Mr. Berkowitz has a, has a landscape architect doing the, uh, the site. I do have a copy of his plan, but I'm not sure if I can represent that here, because I'm not the basket.
Mr. Chair, I can help a little bit.
Oh, it's good, yeah.
There's a plan that's done by, uh, Finnegan, uh, and, uh, signed by an engineer, Wallach. It says, uh, propose six sixty square foot native plant area to have four trees, either pitch pine, beech, plum, uh, hackberry, American holly.
That's official.
That is, that's a.
So that's official.
This is, this is the plan that they submitted, now.
That's the plan that was initially submitted.
So you might change that.
Some modifications, uh, since then, but again, everything will be, um, according to code, however it needs to be, and, again, you know, privacy and beauty together with also staying strictly to the code to, you know, those.
Come on. Please to see native planting. But where will it be exactly?
Well, I, I think if you, um, in front of the, um, the fence, so right now, there's, there's that chain fence that you want to walk around to, to, normally, we would go out that way to reach the beach, and therefore, we'd keep walking by. So you would build a pool up to the level that, you can build the trees up to the level that we can in front of the fence, um, to, you know, provide a little privacy.
That's on the south side of property?
Yeah, or really, well, really on both sides, because you have, uh, a neighbor, but the, the, the main goal, of course, is to have a little bit of privacy, because obviously, people walking by all day, hanging out on the seawall on the deck, you know, so.
So you'll actually do landscaping along that whole side with?
It's to the side.
Along the public access.
Yeah, not on our side, to, to sort of give us a little privacy for the.
Yeah, just break it up a little.
I, just for your information, I do have a, the landscape plan in the car.
Yeah.
Done by Alan Tufts, uh, I'm not the architect, I don't know if I'm allowed to show this to you. You can, I can do it, but I can't show it to you.
Well, I can't, I can't, you can't build this stuff.
This is what we're working with.
Right, you can see there's quite a bit of landscaping all around.
Well, why don't I recommend you do this? Let's mark that as exhibit A six. And my recommendation is, since this is not, is not necessarily the final exact plan, that the final landscape plan as a condition of an approval, if you're, be granted one here tonight, would be subject to the final review and approval of the board engineer as to.
Okay.
Location, size.
Good, good. So that we understand what we're looking at here is.
It's a, yeah.
Sort of, the ballpark of what you're gonna do, but it may not be the final.
Yeah, 'cause I can see, you can see here, he's got, this is labeled evergreen hedge. There's, there's a bunch of evergreens here. This is like seagrass going around, and firewood over here. We have a, a flowering tree to be finalized. Flowering shrug, this is, it's going to be a flowering shrug. So quite a bit of landscaping all around, and even in between the pool and houses, some trees and, and shrubs.
And then they're in front of the house, is that right?
Front of the house, native, uh, planting for final layout, so he hasn't completely figured it out yet, but this whole section here is gonna be native planting.
Mr. Chair, I did have a couple things.
Please.
The, uh, the letter I did, um, I found in, on one of the pieces of paper that was submitted, a fifty-nine point three, uh, as, uh, the proposed lock coverage, and you're using fifty-seven, right?
Yeah, that came, that.
Did I come from this?
That came from that, and I, we did it with my own computer, and it came down a little less, I'm not sure where that person got that.
Initially, we were working with, um, a pool sign, and again, had a medical issue. Perfectly fine person to work with, but.
Okay.
Had to, they had to move on to someone else, and there have been modifications. And you see the date on it, this has been going on for a while, again, that's why.
So it's fifty versus fifty-nine point three?
Well, we're proposing fifty-seven.
I'm sorry, fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven.
Yeah. I was reading my letter. Okay, this cannot be a, a, a major storm order project, it's, it's too small. Uh, I, you talked about the fence, you know a little more of the details. Uh, there was one thing I did find, uh, and maybe, uh, you can, Mr. Berkowitz can, can, can confirm this, but if you take a look at the front, your, uh, front setback on the north side is twenty-four thirty-five. And, um, I think that the board should, where twenty-five is required, I think the board should include in their resolution an approval of that slight difference, because builders, surveyors sometimes make mistakes. Uh, when he goes to sell the property sometime in the future, there could be somebody on the other side of the corner of, of the table buying it, saying, no, I don't wanna buy it, there's a variance required. So if you can show them that a variance was approved, it would be a positive thing for this applicant. It's up to the board.
And, and, and who, who did that measure?
It's on the, uh, survey, like.
That's, yeah, I see it on this, yeah.
Twenty-four, is it on?
Yeah, that was the person, so.
I mean.
Yeah, that's the Finnegan, the Finnegan survey.
Oh, it's the, yeah.
You could also, you can observe images, and some of them down as well, and say, right.
Well, you don't wanna move the house, right? So the best, the best idea is to, is to have the town provide you with a, a variance to allow it, so there's no future problems.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Well, you said that was the architect designer.
Could have been.
Right.
Well, no, this is, this one is Finnegan, the surveyor from Middle Town.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. And the other thing is, I did talk to Ann Wheeler today, and he, and myself decided that you don't need a cap or permit. I originally said cap right here, but, yeah, the seawall, don't need it, so.
Okay.
And, and from this, it looks like, um, I don't know, it looks like it's thirty feet, the pool is thirty feet back from the seaward side of the top of the seawall, is that correct? From this, Dave, could you?
I'm sorry, can you, I'm gonna go back to the, yeah.
On this one, the, the rule is twenty-five feet, I believe, from the seaward side of the top of the seawall. I believe that that's.
Well, the, the seawall is twenty-five, but it's.
Three right here.
Right?
Thirty from the, from the.
You're big enough, you're the seawall.
Well, no.
The problem with the seawall is that, that it tapers down under the ground pretty far, and so nobody really knows what.
So from what I, my understanding, because it affected my house, is.
Right.
The setback from the top of the seaward side. So where that measurement is taken is the top of the seaward side. Where it says thirty feet, that's what I'm reading for that. You see that?
Yeah.
So it, so that's the measurement that matters to deep, the minor sample. It has to be, um, twenty-five, at, at least twenty-five feet, so a little, well.
There's certainly within that.
Yes, there's one.
Yeah, I'm scaling.
I'm reading it, I'm trying to read it, but it's a little.
Yeah, it's a little clearer on my end, yeah. If you go to the seaward, which is right here, to the pool, it's twenty, it's a little more than twenty-five feet.
Yes. Okay.
So Frank, you're saying they measure from the seaward side?
From the seaward, the top of the seaward.
Top of the seawall.
Yep.
And then left.
Their favorite rock.
Their favorite, whatever that favorite rock is, and you have to be twenty-five feet, you have to be at least twenty-five feet away from that, that point.
They, 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 they.
They have zero thirty here. Yeah, zero thirty there, and he's saying it took it certainly over twenty-five where he's reading there.
Yeah, scale, it scales a little.
So, I mean.
The other question is whether or not, uh, the applicant should submit a plot plan. The ordinances say, uh, for any construction, doesn't say house, doesn't say pool, um, I'm just worried a little bit about, uh, there won't be, you know, uh, there might be drainage problems in the future. I know it's all sand. Uh, and we probably don't have to worry much about the, the beach access lot, because that's sand with, uh, you know, hardscape going down the center. But the other, can you describe what's on the, on the north side and what the guy next door has at your propellant?
That, that guy, it's, uh, the, the north side, um, that's, all right, the south side is the one that has the, um.
The walkways.
Walkways, yeah, yeah. Wait, the north side would be on the other side of the entrance.
If you're facing your house, you'd look left.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, he has that sort of like weird architectural structure that's set up, right?
Yeah, I don't know what he has.
Looks like there's a patio with some type of a wall.
He has a patio with statues.
Stone walls and statues.
He's the guy with all the Finnie over like things?
The balustrades.
Balustrades, yeah.
Well, he's got a lot of stuff back there.
Yeah, yeah, I got it.
Councilman and I were just discussing architectural work. It's very unique.
I mean, if this, well, let's put it this way. The building department's going to make a decision on whether or not a plot plan is needed.
I'm gonna agree with that, Dave. I think the plot plan would show how big the deck's gonna be around the pool. And that's not a bad idea to cover you and make sure. And let it go to the engineer and have his approval, and that's adequate, from my opinion.
Most of the information is here, but I hate to say it, it's very sloppy.
Yes, it's very sloppy.
It's hard to read.
It shows the pitch is all for the street.
It does, it does.
That's the initial.
Well, there's nowhere else for the pitch.
I know. I mean, that's the purpose of the plot plan.
Well, it'll also show the structure. It's the wood deck structure around the pool.
This survey is a long...
Well, yeah, here's a question. Does this plan match that plan in terms of the wood deck?
The information?
In the side?
Yeah, it was taken from, yes, we use that.
So they're the same?
Doesn't that serve as a plot plan?
Well, there's no grades on that one. The grades are on this one. You know what? Why don't we leave it up to the building inspector? That's fine.
And then one question in the report that you mentioned it, but where exactly is pool equipment to be located and is it above, set above the flood?
It'll be above the BFE, and it's on the right side of the south side of the house here, next to the utilities.
So there's a race platform? It has air conditioning, cool stuff?
Yes. Yep.
Okay.
It's not the setback. It's not the setback, it is right.
Yeah, it's 10 feet off the side. So that's not the setback. Yep. Yeah, he has the, he meets the 10 feet in a total of 25. So pool equipment is 10 feet off. It's not the setback.
You have to keep it by this dimension because you cannot have anything, air conditioning, pool equipment, or whatever, being the setback.
Okay.
That's important to imagine when you have the people installing things that they stick to.
Kind of make that clear and make sure that they're...
If they're not aware, they could take their...
Yeah.
...influence of this labor and process.
Well, when I have a...
I think we all have a good idea of what's gonna happen here. Why don't we open up to the public unless somebody has another question? Anyone else on the board have a question about the testimony? If not, let's open to the public. Anyone in the public here to make a statement or have a question about any of the testimony? Not public portion is now closed. Board members, any discussion or motion?
I'd like a motion to approve. I'll second that, but we'll also add in that variance for the... Yes. That would increase...
Out for the front.
The setback to the...
Yes.
Legalizes the site.
For... So it'll be 65...
Hundreds.
Right here. Supposed to be 25.
25, yeah.
More than half, more than half foot.
Half foot. 650 feet. 650 inches. Happy to do that.
Cashmere?
Good with the motions? All, I don't know, we need them all, for all.
Lucille?
Yes.
Mr. Cashmore?
Yes.
Chairman Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Julio?
Yes.
Vice Chairman DeSao?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
And Mr. Zalina?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Burkeless. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. Hope to see you again around town. Appreciate it. I see me walking by this evening.
I have a question that Dave told us. We all discussed this landscaping and everything, but under residential application, landscaping even under owner association, I mean, land and commercial property?
No, I think everybody was just listening to Elizabeth and she...
No, you can't tell them what to do as far as landscaping.
She confirmed, we asked a question.
Dave, that's incorrect.
She confirmed, we asked a question.
That's my intention, to tell them what to do. I was just curious because David mentioned it in his letter about landscaping, and I would like to see what they're doing because we need more trees in this town.
Great battles, Liz.
Well, I think you're gonna break something up again. Yes, for a very... It could be a reason for giving a... You can talk about landscaping, you can talk about variance, because if you need to minimize the negative consequences of the variance, it might be the landscaping.
But a perfect example of that would be, let's say, you need a rear setback variance. You're supposed to have, let's say, just sort of say, guarding 25 feet. Your lot's tight, so you're only gonna have a 10-foot rear setback. Or maybe the offset is a nice row of evergreens or something so that even though you're short, you're mitigating that to your neighbor by providing that. So, yeah, so depending on the nature of the belief, your request, sometimes landscaping could be very important.
That's true.
As the location, type, size, impervious, work, you know, landscaping, lots of that.
Absolutely. Liz, the plan that they showed us had a lot of landscaping on it for a single family house.
You thought it was too much?
No, no, I thought it was good. So I'll take a quick look at it. You want to call me in a couple weeks, Widow?
Oh, no, I'm sure it's great. I love it. The more trees, the better.
Yeah, well, I'm sure he's gonna stay with the number of trees that were on that plan. But to me, that's fine. It's a single family house, that's pretty safe.
We all have a big consideration in this environment here. It's not easy to keep things growing. I'm crazy at my house and have to nonstop operation to try to keep things alive, so...
I'm sure it's gonna be something there because a lot of people walking by.
Yeah, no, no, I understand that, but I mean, you've got to understand, not anything grows in this environment.
Especially for trees.
Trees, I can't keep a tree alive. Like, everyone dies, I keep planting, and then all the... The wind gets in, the salt water gets in, and the wind, the wind fills everything. So, yeah, I know what you're, I know what your motive is, but it's like, we have...
But come down and look at down at our south end, between sunrise and ocean reef. We have so many trees and they've survived Sandy. I'm 99% of them survived Sandy.
Are they the scrub pines?
Excuse me?
Are they the scrub pines? Because they keep growing, Seabright.
They're some kind of pine, but...
Yeah, it's a black pine.
But we also have... And they have juniper and roses survived everything.
Yeah, roses, yeah.
Yes.
Correct. Certain things do help. The almond, if you block from the east wind, it helps tremendously because it cuts down on the salt. You can actually, we took a walk with a landscape architect along Ocean Avenue. He said, see here, everything's dead, start here, starts living, because it's blocked.
Everything in the front of my house has windburn, everything in the back is fine.
Yeah, it's fine. Yeah.
It's the north east.
It's Seabright. Yeah, it's called nature.
So moving along to 16 via Ripper Properties LLC has asked for extension again. A discussion or motion to carry it further?
Attorney Dr. Ellis.
You can't do another, you can't do another, says your name.
Or, you can't bring it, carry it to a date to be determined later. And so there's no...
We should have asked, we should have asked Tony when he was here.
I don't know what that means.
I'll make a motion to carry it, but to a date to be determined, and they'll have to provide those. Mr. Chairman, I talked to Jim Higgins, the planner for that application today, and he said they don't even have a revised date yet. They're still trying to decide what to do.
I'll second Mark's motion. We were all called, please.
Okay, can Austin be there?
If it's a, to use variance.
Lucille?
Yes.
Oh, that's right.
We're to use variance.
Ben doesn't know this on his calendar.
Mr. Cashmore?
Yes.
Chairman Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Julio?
Yes.
Vice Chairman DeSao?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Lexing?
Yes.
Mr. Zalina?
Sure.
You're rocking over there tonight.
I mean, I don't care if you don't even know when they're being carried.
It's just that we're not dismissing you.
Not dismissing you. But there are going to have to read out.
Is there any other business before, or is there anyone in the public that would like to be heard this evening?
Take your bets.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Public portion is now closed. Can we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, I may.